Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting to order today for our August the 10th, 2023 regular board meeting. And before we get into our agenda, I'd like to have a moment of silence for our Board of Supervisor member Ronald Jett, and just like have a moment of silence for him. All right, I'd like to say one thing about Mr. Jett. Mr. Jett has been an asset on this board, and he's going to be missed. He's served for, what, 26 years, served on other boards and all, and he's really been an asset to this entire county. He's really going to be missed. He's been a very good friend of mine for 60-plus years, so we've known each other. So I am really going to miss him. Any other board members want to comment?
I think you said it most, we're definitely going to miss him.
Yep.
Yeah, to me, it's very dependable. Oh, man, I don't know what I'm gonna do, because for years, he furnished my craps, and, man, he was always on time, and always, he was very friendly to people.
Now, I would add, I would recommend everybody get a chance if they can to read Henry Hall's excerpts in the Rappahannock Record, and I'll just quote from what one of the things I think sums up everything. "He cared for the county employees, the county and its employees, its students, and its citizens." Civic pride was important to Ronnie, and he sought to instill it in everyone else.
Yep, that's correct. All right, now, we'll go on to start on our agenda here. First thing we have is indication, and Reverend Williams, would you be so kind, sir?
[inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
Amen. Thank you, sir. All right, will we all stand and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item would be approval of the agenda. Do we have any deletions or additions to the agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
No movement, second.
I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next would be the approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes. We have the July the 13th, 2023, to July the 18th, 2023, August the 2nd, 2023. Are there any additions or deletions to those minutes?
I move that we approve all three sets of minutes.
All right, I got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, next, our presentations. We have a resolution for Mount Olive Baptist Church. Mr. Basie, would you take care of that, sir?
Yes. Resolution congratulating Mount Olive Baptist Church for their 150th anniversary, whereas the Mount Olive Baptist Church in Hesville, Virginia is celebrating their 150th anniversary of Christian services, and whereas Mount Olive Baptist Church was established on August 9th, 1873, and has a longstanding history of community involvement in Northumberland County, and whereas Mount Olive Baptist Church is recognized for the celebration of life and contributions to the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors congratulates Mount Olive Baptist Church on their 150th anniversary and for being an outstanding example of a community church.
All right, have a motion.
All right, move that way, approve.
All right, we have a motion. And a second, all right? Any other discussion?
What I would recommend, assuming we approve it, which I would be surprised if we didn't, is that a copy of this resolution be sent to our legislators in Richmond to give them an appropriate resolution from Richmond, too.
Yep. You know, I didn't have, I didn't realize the church had been there for 150 years.
You're not that old?
No, not quite. No, I'm not quite that old. No, I did not realize it had been there for 150 years. I knew it'd been there a long, long time, but 150 years is a long time.
Well, those of us who live over that way know they've been there a long time.
Yeah.
And they're bedrockness in that community.
Yeah, that's right. They've been, they've been an asset to the community. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Reverend Williams?
Thank you, Reverend Williams, sir. Thank you, sir. We're so grateful to proclamation as we give this. I wasn't around either. But we have strived to be a people of life for the community, and we pray for the work that we work.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Oh, I mean, my chair of leaders is here also.
Yes.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you.
All right, next item would be Tyrone Williams, Community, La-Zine, and Avacy Council. He got double duty tonight.
Yeah, I think it's triple duty.
It is, it is, it is. I can count, that much.
Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity, allowing me this opportunity to share information about the community of La-Zine and Avacy Council. Reverend Haney and the rest of the supervisors. It made me wonder why or how this got started. Next slide. Most of you remember when George Floyd died back in 2020. As a result of that, our community came together because of the feeling that there was, there were police attacks, that it was unscrupulous, something that was not necessarily needed. And people all across the nation were protesting because of this abuse of power. So in June, a month later, we came together and had a open forum here in this very room. Sheriff Beecham, Johnny Beecham was one of those that spearheaded that. As a matter of fact, he and I talked to kind of figure out what is it that we can do to avert such things happening potentially in this area, because we never know where the minds and thoughts of people are and how they think, especially if there is not a congenial relationship between law enforcement and the community. So at that town hall, we literally had an open and frank dialogue with those in the community. We had approximately 75 to 100 people in this room, and questions were asked, and Sheriff Beecham stood firm and shared his thinking and his philosophy on policing. So he did express regrets and disappointments for the abuse of power that occurred with George Floyd, and he wanted to assure the community that such actions would not be tolerated, and that he would do all that he could to ensure that the deputies would provide the most professional level of service to the community. And he thought to find a way to improve the working relationship between the sheriff's office and the community. And as a result of that, that's how we came into existence. Challenges primarily was a result of disinformation and disinformation, of which we are currently experiencing in America today. And we especially wanted to enhance and improve the relationship between the sheriff's office and the African-American community, but overall for everyone in the community. So in March of 2021, the Virginia Legislature adopted a new law, they passed a new law to establish what's called the citizen, excuse me, the civilian review board for police departments. And that was something that was mandated, however, that was not mandated for sheriff's offices, for executive officials. So as not to appear as though Northumberland County Sheriff's Office was not supportive of this movement, Sheriff Beecham agreed to establish such a council so that we might address the issues and potential issues in our community, wanting everyone to be safe, wanting everyone to be informed, but also in effort to increase the relationship in a positive way between the overall community and the sheriff's office. So we came into existence in January of 2021. Realizing the atmosphere during that time, there was a lot of mistrust. There were a lot of people complaining about things that were happening in their relationships between law enforcement, and especially in certain communities of color. And because of that, we needed to find a way to curtail or even head off any potential issues. We see it today with the misinformation, with the untrue statements that are being leveled against individuals. But also, there was a seemingly effort where people of color were stopped for apparently no reason at all in certain counties throughout America, certain cities especially. And some may even feel that it has happened here. Now, I don't know what the true relationship was before Sheriff Beecham took over as sheriff, when he was elected as sheriff, but there was significant mistrust, and the sharing of information, especially even when it came to providing information about crimes that were committed, people were tight-lipped, and they didn't see the need to have the community and the sheriff's office working as a synergized force so that we could avert potential issues later on. So we needed to have an unbiased entity within the community where citizens can come and they can share not only their thoughts, their ideas, but also their complaints that could be investigated in an unbiased way so that we can find out what actually happened. Even since our council has been in existence, there have been several instances in which I received phone calls about particular things that have happened, excuse me, alleged to have happened, and come to find out after investigating it, they were unfounded and untrue. So we need to have a mechanism in place so that we can take a look at these things and try to resolve the issue and get the true, true information out to the public. So our purpose is to create an environment where open dialogue, constructive engagement, and transparency to build partnerships between the community, its residents, and law enforcement so that we can promote a fair and unbiased enforcement of the laws, have mutual respect and trust in one another, but also that will promote a safer environment. Our goal, which are several, first, to create trust between the community and law enforcement through transparency, sharing of information. Promote fair, effective, and timely internal disciplinary procedures and enforcement of policies, procedures, and ethical police conduct. In other words, we want to ensure that our police officers are doing training in how they should handle certain situations, because when they step out of line, they still need to be held accountable. So we want to ensure that they have the training that's necessary that enables them to perform in a professional manner. We want to use best practices in prosecution through enhanced training, making sure that those who find themselves operating outside of the law are held accountable. And our goal is also is to represent community concerns and advocate for excellence within law enforcement, and we encourage full racial, gender, and ethnic representation in all areas of law enforcement. We cannot and would not want to dictate to the sheriff's office the makeup, the racial makeup, or gender makeup of his force, but I think us sharing our thoughts and trying to be representative of the community has value. So then, all of those who are disenfranchised, or all of those who have had or have questions, not just about policing, but just ensuring that there are thoughts, there are ideas, and their needs are being met when it comes to law enforcement within Northumberland County. Next slide. So far, we have conducted two mediation and conflict resolution workshops, meaning the Community La-Zine and Avacy Council have gone to train along with the sheriff and other deputies so that we can get a better understanding of who they are, how they function, and then even the issues in, I guess, for lack of a better term, the emotions that are even generated when they are approaching a vehicle along the side of the road. And once we get an understanding of what they go through as the general public, then we will have a better understanding of how we are to conduct ourselves in such instances. We also had two-day training on police procedures, and I will, I don't gladly share this, but in a few other exercises that the Community La-Zine and Avacy Council members participated in, everybody died. Because we didn't know how we should, how the police officers, and what they deal with when they enter certain situations. And because we don't know, it opens the door for us now to be more sympathetic as to some of the things that they go through when they're entering certain situations, even when there are problems, home problems of people at home, when they're having challenges between husband and wife or other domestic-type issues. There is a surge of energy and uncertainty when you go into those environments, and the two, you find yourself in those environments, you always, you may always point the finger at someone else without understanding what they go through as police officers when they're in that environment. We've also hosted a cops and collars luncheon with pastors in the area to get their support for this particular council, and we've also identified some activities to improve community policing. If you go to the next slide. Not only have the collaborative relationship between the sheriff's office, and we do that by having meetings, routine meetings, regular meetings with the sheriff's office as well as some of the deputies, just to interact with them and answer some of the questions that they have, and they answer questions that we have with regards to things going on in the community. We've also introduced the sheriff's office to programs such as Police to Peace, which is an initiative, as well as Ethical Policing and Courageous, as well as The Guardian Program. Now, some of you may have seen a presentation on television about The Guardian Program, but it is, it's a program that when a police officer stops someone for a traffic violation or what have you, at the end of that encounter, they're given a card, and with that card, it has a QSI code on it, they can go on their computer, and they can rate what and how the interaction was between themselves and that police officer, so that there's an accountability on, and finding out the record from the public, how that interaction took place. There's not a report card or such, but what it does, it helps the police officer understand and remind them of the parameters that they must operate within. But what it also does, it lets, especially at the end, let the consumer, and in this case, I'm saying someone that stopped by the side of the road for a traffic violation or whatever it might be, let them know that the county is sincerely interested in finding out how the interaction was between themselves and that officer that stopped. That is very important because it gives the sheriff and other leadership within the sheriff's office an opportunity to see how they are functioning as a sheriff's office. Next slide. The committee is, or the council is very diverse across racial lines, gender lines, educational lines, even political lines. We want to hear the voices of everyone, as many people in the community as we possibly can, to understand some of the challenges that they are feeling, and give them an opportunity to ask questions and maybe even share information about particular instances in which they feel that it may, or someone that they know may have been not treated in the most appropriate way. We want to continue with the collaboration, but we also want to ensure that we are connected to the community, not just with the churches, but with the NWACP, the Girls Club, the YOCA, various organizations that we want to include as part of our overall organization so that we can get not just information, but even provide training and information on what our sheriff deputies go through in a variety of situations. Next slide. That is the bulk of my presentation. Hope I wasn't too long, but I would like to open the floor if you will, if you have questions that you would like to ask.
Any board members have any questions?
Not at this time. Good program.
I think it's a very good program, yes.
And we are soliciting your support. We're looking to have our first community session either in the month of September or October, and during that session, we'll probably have some level of training or information that those in attendance will be able to participate in. We do, we do some hands-on type experiential training so that we put those in attendance in the shoes of our deputies and have them to go through what the deputies go through in a safe environment. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, next item would be Linda Hodges, the CSB State Performers Contract.
Chairman Haney, members of the board, first of all, I want to thank you for this opportunity tonight. I know you're a busy people, and I really appreciate having this time. Mr. Tomlin, how's retirement?
So far, so good.
So far, so good. Very good, very good. I also, I want to start out by recognizing the Northumberland CSB board member, Pratt Haney, who is here. Thank you for appointing him to our board. He is wise, he is experienced, he comes prepared, and he is gracious, and you can't ask for a better combination than that as a board member. So thank you very much for appointing me, or I should say, we appointed him last year. So as I think many of you may know, every two years, a performance contract needs to be approved by each of the localities that we serve. The performance contract is an agreement between the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, localities and community services. And it outlines both our finances and our services. It happens every two years. This year is for 2024 and 2025. As you also may know, state funding only provides up to 90% of the budget, and the performance contract, and actually, the Code of Virginia, outlines that locality should make up the other 10%. I'm here today to request that the board sign a resolution approving the performance contract. As I kind of referred to, the contract is broken into a financial component and a service component, and you've been provided the financial component. The service component, I didn't think you wanted that kind of reading, is probably two inches thick. And the financial really is three different areas, three different budgets, behavioral health, mental health, substance use disorder, and then developmental services, also known as intellectual services, intellectual disability services. Please know that the performance contract does not include the early intervention services, also known as RISP. That's a different funding stream, so that is carved out of this. And for those who don't know what that, what RISP is, it serves children with disabilities and developmental delays through the age of two. So this year, unlike previous years, we provided you a pie chart outlining the finances for each of those three program areas, and that chart shows exactly where the funding for these programs comes from. Just so you know, the service component includes information like how do you submit your data, the requirements when you have federal funding, forensic services, discharge planning from state hospitals, and things such as that. And again, it dictates how we provide those services. So before I turn it over to you for any questions about the performance contract, I did want to take a moment to provide you with some updates on our services, which I always like to do when I'm before board supervisors. So unfortunately, since COVID, we had to close two of our houses that served individuals with intellectual disabilities. We could not staff them because they were open 20, they had to be staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And these individuals that were living there were moved elsewhere to other appropriate homes. But we've repurposed one of them, and one in Middlesex County, that are going to serve higher-functioning individuals with intellectual disabilities who can live somewhat independently but need some supervision. So that house, which we've previously called Middlesex House, should be opening hopefully in the next month or two, once we get our license. We're excited about that because there's not very many of these homes in the state of, in the Commonwealth. Our psychosocial program, which I probably talk about every time I come, is located now in Tapahannock. Previously, it was in Kilmarnick. It's called Charter House, and that is a very dynamic and robust program for individuals who have a serious mental illness. When you walk in the door, you really can't tell, or you shouldn't be able to tell, who is an individual with a serious mental illness and who is staff, because we work side by side, and it's considered a clubhouse model. And unlike 20, 25 years ago, if you've got a, it was considered a death sentence to have a diagnosis of schizophrenia. That's no longer true. Many of the people that we work with Many of the people that we work with do get employment and do work and are employed and have independent living skills. It used to, they used to say, pretty much when you had that diagnosis, give up your life as you know it. Stay at home, don't stress yourself, take your medications as prescribed. That was your life. 20, 20 years old, it was over, as you knew it, as you hoped. Not anymore. They equally now have the opportunity to have the hopes and dreams that many of us have. And that's in great part to programs like our clubhouse program in Tappahannock. And, you know, it does serve all 10 counties. So, I just want to make sure everybody knows that. We do provide transportation as needed. We do have many challenges, and the greatest of these is we right now have 40% employee vacancy rate. And that has impacted our ability to provide services as is needed and as we would like. And the situation with our state hospitals, I think the last time I was here, I raised that up, and it's still present, three and a half years later. That means there is, there are not enough beds in our state hospital system. I'm sure the sheriff could probably speak to that as well as anybody. And so, what happens? They languish in the emergency rooms for up to a week, over a week at a time, awaiting a bed to come open. That means your law enforcement officers have to sit with them and stay with them by law. That means our emergency rooms are filled with individuals who really don't need to be there, are not getting treated there, but yet they're there and they take up their space. And finally, our emergency services staff, from the time that they recommend them to go to hospital until they actually are admitted, our staff has to continually call hospitals across the straight state, not just one time a day, sometimes multiple times a day. So, they are on the phone continuously providing the medical information about requesting them to consider accepting them. So, this is a continuous strain, and what's happening is happening in our localities. That's where the strain is happening, because our, we just don't have beds in our state hospitals. And at Eastern State, the hospital we have previously known to use is really become a forensic hospital. They take individuals who are criminals that need to be hospitalized and individuals who need to go into the hospital to have what we call restorations. They've been determined to be incompetent to stand trial, they need to be restored competency to go to trial, they, someone, the judge has decided, or the defense attorney recommends they not do it in the community, so they go to Eastern State where they stay until that is completed. And those beds, 98% of those beds at Eastern are used in this fashion, which does not open them up to the people that are in the emergency rooms that need to be hospitalized on a civil basis. So, again, all of this is a strain on all of our community partners. And I just think the, I'm sure you've probably heard from the sheriff's, sheriff's office overtime. I'm sure he has to pay a significant amount of overtime for his deputies when someone's waiting with them at the, at the hospital. And we recognize this, and we are hoping our general assembly will come up with some really concrete solutions. So, I'll leave it, actually, it's a rather depressing note to leave it on, but I'll leave it there and ask if you have any questions for me.
Any board members have any questions?
So, Eastern State is supplanting Central State for doing the forensics? Or is Central State?
See, Central State really has the more violent individuals and the ones who are less violent or restoration, individuals there on restorations are usually not, there's no violence involved. But that's how, that's how the legal system is now determining more people to be deemed incompetent and need to be restored. And some people are using the back door when they're, someone who has a mental illness might break, break the law, a misdemeanor, might need hospitalization. Previously, they may not have charged them to hopefully go the civil route. Well, now, the way to get them in, charge them criminally, and you go through the back door and get them in that way through criminal TVO.
Are you getting any of the opioid funds from the state or anywhere?
We, we have been working primarily with Gloucester County. I've worked, I've had conversations with, I think, every county with the exception of Middlesex about use of those funds. The one that has become more fruitful is Middlesex, I mean, I'm sorry, Gloucester County, where we're going to work with them on getting a counselor in the high school and one, as one arm of it.
You're not getting anything from the state on the opioids yet?
Not yet, sir.
They got the bigger pot than everybody.
They do. And you have to meet, as you probably know, have to meet some certain criteria to get that. And, and one of them is collaboration between counties.
All right. Any other questions?
Any questions on the performance contract?
Questions on the performance contract?
Nope.
Staff have any questions on it?
The chairman and I move that we pass the appropriate resolution to adopt this performance contract.
All right. I got, all right, got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Next item would be Ellen Kirby. She's our treasurer here. Ms. Kirby?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I'm here this evening to suggest a proposed change to the county ordinance for dog licenses. In 2014, the state changed the code to allow for lifetime dog licenses. And so, I have data for about 80 of those, of the Virginia localities. A third of them have, as of two years ago, enacted the lifetime dog licenses. And in speaking with the treasurers of those localities, they indicate that the citizens are very pleased with not having the burden of getting an annual dog license, but just a one-time license for their animal. The requirements for the rabies remain the same, however. And if a person fails to get their dog re-vaccinated on the schedule, they would lose the lifetime dog license and would have to reapply for one, once they got the rabies inoculation for their, for their pet. So, the enforcement also would remain the same. The, the Virginia law changed probably 15 to 20 years ago to provide that all of the veterinarians in the state send all the local treasurers the rabies inoculation information. And so, we update our files in the office, and we would continue to do so and would continue to provide the animal control officer with the lists of those animals who did not have current rabies inoculations. Right now, it's a list of those who do not have dog tags, current dog tags. So, I have the support of our sheriff and, on this, and I had initially thought, I had been a little leery about this, but, and wanted to see what other localities experience would be, and it has been very successful throughout the state. So, I am bringing this to you gentlemen for your consideration. Do you have any questions for me?
All right. Any questions?
The biggest concern I have is the recertification of the rabies. How is that done? Obviously, to purchase the initial lifetime, they've got to present to you or your office the rabies certificate.
Right.
Then that will expire within whatever period of time. How is that loop corrected or closed?
Okay. So, in our system, we have the expiration date of the rabies certificate. And so, the vets have to provide us by law the updated inoculation dates. And so, we would enter that into the computer system that we keep.
But if a person is used, check, does different vets, you may have trouble then knowing who to contact.
Well, the, the law requires that the veterinarians in each locality send that locality's treasurer their information. And then, as the treasurer, we're required, if there is a person on that list who lives in another locality, we have to then forward that to, say, Lancaster County. And they would update their records. And so, that's how we would know statewide who's, who's current on their rabies inoculations.
And if the board were to adopt this, what would be, when would become effective? Immediately or would be effective July 1, next year?
Well, we sell the dog licenses on an annual basis. And we start selling them November 1 for the, for the next year. So, I would propose that it be effective for the next tag year, which would be 2024, for sale November 1, 2023. The code provides for a fee between $10 and $50 for these licenses. And statewide, it's, it's anywhere from $10 to $50. But I only know of one locality charging $50, and that is the city of Suffolk. And I would propose a $20 license fee. Currently, we have $8 for male and female and $5 for spayed and neutered dogs. And the differential was years ago to encourage people to spay and neuter their, their pets. And so, when I was preparing the presentation for you all this evening, I was a little surprised that only 20% of our dogs in Northumberland County are either male or female and have not been spayed or neutered. So, we're, we're getting in a little less than $8,000 in dog licenses. And the cost, not including personnel, is about $3,000.
All right. Any other questions?
I may have misunderstood you. Once the rabies, rabies vaccination certification expires, the lifetime license expires. Then they got to reapply?
Yes.
Okay. Because in here, it's got the lifetime license will once again be valid upon renewal of the dog's rabies vaccination.
Right. But it would be...
They would have to re...
They would have to reapply. If they allowed their rabies inoculation for their animal to expire, then they would have to start the process over again, which is another incentive for people to keep the, the dogs inoculated.
That's all I got.
All right. So, 20 bucks again.
I'm sorry?
You would, you would pay your 20 bucks again after you got your new rabies certificate. Over and over. So, if you keep forgetting it, it would cost you a whole lot more to keep your, keep your tag on your dog.
We don't really have that many people that forget. They forget to get the dog license, you know? It's like, oh, we have to do this every year? Well, yeah. But, but the, the vet reminds them of the upcoming inoculation.
That's right. We always get your notice from the vet.
Yeah. And we would send another notice if, if we had information that the rabies had expired. So, but it would cut down a lot on the postage costs and the personnel costs and so on. And you would have four times the revenue the first year, but of course, it would taper off in subsequent years.
All right. Any other questions? Staff have any questions? All right. Does the board want to act on this now, or does the board want some time to think about it?
Well, we'd have to hold a public hearing set to be an ordinance change.
Yep.
I'm going to go ahead and advertise it for next month. That'll give you a month to think about it.
Yeah.
Plus, public input, too.
All right. I got a motion to advertise for a hearing, got a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, we will advertise that for a public hearing September?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions in the meantime, I'll be happy to answer those or get the information for you.
Okay.
Before, before you leave, I just want to let the community know we'll be, Galley United Methodist Church will be having a celebration on Saturday, September the 9th. And Ellen has been tremendous as a servant to Northumberland County, so she'll be one of our grand marshals in the parade. And we invite everyone, that's on September the 9th. And the lineup for the parade would be at 12:15. But I just want to thank you, Ellen, because you have been an outstanding person for this county.
Thank you.
You help people that may come up short, but you found a way for them to pay their tax. And I just want to thank you as a supervisor for your great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, excuse me. Next is an update from the Virginia Department of Transportation, David Beal.
Excuse me. Good evening.
Good evening.
We have been busy. We've patched potholes countywide. We repaired a slope failure on Monday Point Road. We had shoulder repairs on Courthouse Road, Light Street, Bogie Neck Road, South Gate Drive, and Wacomico Drive. Cut brush on Bush Mill, Georgetown, Light Street, as well as within Sherwood Forest subdivision. Our Jack and Bore pipe replacement on Route 200. We're still waiting to get that grout in the old pipe. I'm told that's going to happen next week, and we're going to come back and work on the slope there, once that grout is done.
Are you going to be putting a railing up on it?
There are no current plans to put a guardrail. We did get a work order in this week asking us to look at, look at that for a guardrail. There has never been a guardrail there, but we are going to build that slope back out. So, there will be more room along the shoulder there, and we will send a traffic engineer and get them to assess the need for guardrail there.
Okay.
What about, what are you going to replace the sheet metal piling with? That's still in the ground.
It'll stay there. That's holding the slope back on the property owner's side.
Well, metal rusts in contact with the ground over time. I've seen you've used concrete type stuff before, not a solid thing. You've done it solid, too. But I've seen things where you kind of latticed it tight.
Yeah, that sheet pile will be there a long time. It, it will deteriorate, but it's, I don't know what gauge it is, but it's, it's very thick. I mean, you probably have 20, 40 years before it goes anywhere. We plan to clean ditches on Fruit Plain, Valley Drive, and we have pipe replacements scheduled on various routes, Dodlet, Mount Olive, Lake Road, Honest Point, Flood Point, Owl Town, Monday, and Monday Point. We'll continue to patch potholes. We have pipes on various routes we want to clean, and we'll continue to address work orders countywide. Countywide litter pickup started on Monday, and the mowing starts next Monday, and that'll be countywide primaries and secondary routes. Shoulder grading, we actually completed Cedar Point Road yesterday, and we started Livelihood Road today. The plant mix schedule, I got, we get a two-week look ahead on the plant mix schedule every summer. And I, I got the two-week look ahead after I sent in this board report. I would have put that it was under construction because it'll be under construction before you see me again next month. But the, the work on 360 is planned to start the week of the 21st of August. Service treatment schedule is complete, so all those routes are done. And that's, that's my report. Do you all have any questions for me?
Yes. Plenty. Malibu Bay. Across the Malibu Bay, Georgetown Road, the grass is so high that people's pulling out in the road. They can't see that. They can't see that pull out past the grass. So you need to start that before you have an accident. Also, Good Luck Road. Turning from Northumberland, that grass is so high. I mean, people got to come up that hill. So it could be a terrible accident. So we need to get that grass mowed as quick as possible before we have a terrible accident.
That was Good Luck in what?
200.
200.
Jesse Dubon.
Today, I was in West Point, all right? And I mentioned, you know, I said, Dave, I thought it would be a good idea to put the strips on both sides of the road. West Point has...
Yep, they do.
Huh?
Yeah, they do.
Yes, they do.
Every, almost every stop, almost every...
Like I tell you, see, a person can go on the other side, try to skip and cause an accident. So if you check West Point, you know, sometime I just ride. And I say, oh, someone's thinking like me. With those strips on both sides of the road, a person cannot go on the other side and miss it. So I'd like for you to check it out and see if we can follow in his suit.
I think that'd be in the other district. It's on the, I think it's on the south side of the Pumonkey. On the other side, the Ethan Bridge or whatever bridge it is.
Yeah, that's where it is.
Yeah. It's on the New Kent side.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have.
I just want to understand you. You want the rumble strip to go from the yellow line all the way to the curb or you want another set of rumble strips?
Another set.
You want another set?
Yeah, on the other side, right?
I got you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Jimmy?
Yeah, slope repaired Monday Point Road. Put a guardrail there, like a 20-foot drop.
We'll look at it.
In very little, in very little short.
I think it's better now than it's been in 20 years.
A whole lot better. But it's still, it's a right steep drop if a car goes off in there. But it is, it is a whole lot better than what it's been in a long time. Those guys worked hard to get that road put back together twice.
Yeah, they did. That was, I was actually on vacation and came back and it was done. So that's always a good thing, but you hate that it happened. But they were out there in that heat, that hot week, over the weekend, getting that done. So appreciate them.
Obviously, you mentioned obviously the Monday Point and the one on 200. Looks like you're getting a lot of shoulder failures. Is there any, I know your agency has put where the culverts are, where you marked them and like that. A lot of, I mean, a lot of your banks are failing now. And that needs to be looked inspected, too. Monday Point, 200 on 360, right outside Burgess. Then another one just other side of Heathville. You're getting a lot of slope failures. And is there any sense to look at those things before they fail?
A lot of what we're doing is related to pipe failures. The one at Monday Point was not a pipe failure. But we've had a long list, I'd say, since I got here. And we whittled that down. But as we find the new ones, we're trying to get them fixed. I think in doing the inventory that we've done, we've found some additional locations that we didn't know about. But it seems like anytime we get a, I don't know how much rain we got that day. I understand it was a pretty heavy storm.
It was probably about two inches.
Yeah, it seems like anytime we get two or more inches, we have a problem somewhere.
Did you get some pictures? I sent Mr. Tadlock to you about on Remo Road, about ditches need to be, culverts need to be blown out or cleaned out.
Okay.
You sent it to him?
It was, it was like within the past month. 169, 185, and another one, then 245, I believe, or whatever. Because the problem is you get one of these one- to two-inch rains, the ditches are, I mean, the culverts are stopped up and then it's starting to come out in the road.
Can you give me those addresses again?
Mr. Tadlock has it.
He's got it, okay.
Because it either may happen, and this was done in that old federal project there, too. So these were not individual, themselves put them in.
Okay.
Some reason, just Remo Road was under a federal project down to Remo. They rebuilt all of Remo down to Remo.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
What's the update on the culvert repairs? Where you have them, we got quite a few spots in the roads where the culverts are broken and they're settling again. One of them, you know, got them on One Point Road, got them on Clarktown Road, and I just number them around.
The one on Monday Point, I think, is on my list for upcoming work. The contractor's going to do that work is currently working in Richmond County. And then I believe they'll be back this way. All that work will be done before December. But Clarktown, it's not on my list. But if you know these areas, and I would just say, I was thinking about it when Mr. Long was giving me his list. I would just encourage you all to remind the citizens, and I'll do so tonight, that, you know, the best way to get things fixed the fastest is to call 1-800-FOR-R-O-A-D, Four Road, and put in a work order. That goes directly to the superintendent in the area headquarters. And, you know, the next morning, if it comes in at night, he'll see that. I'll see it, it comes in my computer, I'll see it as well. And, you know, it's just a direct line of communication the citizens have directly to the superintendent.
What's that number again, please, sir?
It's 1-800-FOR-R-O-A-D.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can also report problems on the VDOT website, too.
Yeah, and even if you have a question, say, you see a sign on the side of the road and it says there's an upcoming project. And you got a question, you can call that number and you'll get the person, you can get ahold of the person that can answer that question. So anything related to VDOT, you can call that customer service line and they will, they'll get you an answer.
I think all of these spots, you've been there before and patched them up, you know, tried to fill a hole in as much as possible. Some of them are settling in again.
Well, it's typical, we'll patch them two and three times before, you know, we get to replace a pipe. But if you notice a problem, you know, let me know. Have them look at Clarktown and...
And I understand some of them don't have the traffic that others do. So, you know, another bag of patch will probably hold it for another six months or more. All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Beal.
All right, thank you all.
All right, next is update from Northumberland County Schools. Dr. Walgro and Tara Booth. Good evening, ladies.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. We are here this evening to provide back-to-school highlights. And our first day of school is this coming Monday, August 14. And the school day is from 8:00 a.m. until 3:05. Car riders can be dropped off at 7:45. And I'm just going through some tidbits in the newsletter. If a parent or family has questions about the bus, which bus their child drives, we have that information linked online. There's a direct link in the newsletter that was sent yesterday. And this will inform parents of the bus number as well as the bus driver's cellphone number. And all of our bus drivers will be reaching out to all of their families on the route to talk about pickup times and drop-off times in the afternoon. If you move along in the newsletter, there is information about breakfast and lunch. Breakfast and lunch, once again, is free of charge for all students. If a family has an urgent question before the first day of school, we've provided the families with contact information for the elementary school, middle school, high school, as well as my cellphone number. So families should feel free to reach out if they have anything urgent that comes up before Monday. Once again, we'll continue metal detection in all of our schools. I also provided calendar reminders for August, September, and October that you can review. Some community highlights. We wanted to thank the Calio Moose Lodge for their generous donation of school supplies and money. If a student or a family needs school supplies, they can contact our counseling office and that's where those items are available. In addition, last Friday, we had Stuff the Bus at Walmart. And that was a tremendous success as well. So we just want to thank all of the generous donors. We had Convocation this past Monday, and that was a wonderful celebration. Again, preliminary results are showing schools being fully accredited. And a final community event, we celebrated National Night Out with Sheriff Beecham and his staff. And that was a very nice event that was planned. So those are our back-to-school highlights. And I have Mrs. Booth here for some finance updates.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On the 4th of August, we received $36,582.45 in Title I reimbursements. On August 11, we received, excuse me, $74,509.59 in IDEA 611 and Title II reimbursement. So so far for the month of August, we have $111,092.4. We have about $170,000 left to reimburse an S R 2, and then we will be able to go ahead and get that closed out. I expect that to be done within the week. We have until September 30, 2024, to close out S R 3. And we're continuing to file reimbursements for Title I. Hope to have that completed prior to September 30. We have until the middle of November. And that concludes my report.
All right. Any board members have any comments or questions?
Well, yes. Every day I meet a student I taught, you know, all over the counties. Not only Northumberland, West Moles. I met one the other day. He said, Mr. Long, when I was in school, you convinced our parents that everybody needs a driver's license. So she never know, unless they mentally challenged, you know. Well, this young man was telling me that, you know, I talked to three young men that I thought I could get them to work, but that they had a license and they were finished school without license. So I would encourage you, you know, and every parent I talked to during that time said, Mr. Long, you know best. So, hey, they didn't have a license, they didn't have a choice. You had to have a license. Some of them cried. This guy that talked to me cried, but he still had to get a license, you know. And now he thinks for today, but he say he tried to hire two or three kids that signed up school that do not have that license. I don't know what happened, but, you know, hopefully those kids will find a way to get their license. But another thing, how many teachers did we lose this year? Do you have, no runoff here?
I don't know.
We have 15 vacancies right now, yes.
15 vacancies?
Actually, I need to double-check that, Mr. Long. We have 15 new teachers that we've hired. We have a number of vacancies I do not, so please correct that in the paper, okay? We don't have 15 vacancies. But they're posted online. We do, we're looking for a high school science teacher, a high school English teacher. Because our contracts came out so late, we did lose some teachers who went to other towns where they could be under contract, unfortunately. So this year, I think together, both boards could work closely to try to get those contracts at an earlier time such as May instead of July. It really hurt us.
Right. I'd like to inform the community, you know, this board doesn't know everything. And there's things out there that can happen, so you might be able to help us. I'll give you a typical example. I asked some students I taught, I was in the bank. They said, Mr. Long, why don't we have the program that Richmond County have? What program? It's a law where all kids, no matter their family's income, get a free lunch. So I went to the superintendent and told her about it. And her, they checked into it, and we got it. That come from the community. So it's good, I mean, you pay tax. Don't forget that. If you don't, let me know that. But I'm sure everybody had paid tax. So information from you can mean a lot to help our school system and help our county. So I informed you to help us on that. And one other thing, you know, you got a lot of kids that finished school cannot sign a check the correct way. So we're missing that course collectively.
Financial literacy? We have it.
You have it?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a requirement.
It's requirement, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's good. Good to hear, right? Because I was talking to someone the other day, my son cannot sign a check. I'm glad you have that now. Maybe he finished before you got it. Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Jimmy?
The contract issues that y'all have, it's other school systems had the same thing. Norbert Teacher, as of last Friday, had been teaching for a school system for years and has yet to get a contract. And she needed a report to work this past Monday. So I can understand why that can kind of hinder things, but...
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. So hopefully, we can do better next year. And we'll work together on that.
Right. We lost teachers because of that problem?
Yes, sir.
Well, I can say you this, Lancaster County has as many openings, if not more, than Northumberland County, and their contracts were issued in May.
All the school systems have openings.
I mean, that's just the nature of education right now. Teaching is a tough job to get hired into, that people want to come into. And it's regardless of circumstance, it could be pay, it could be safety, it could be people want big money, big quick, and you can't, public service, working for the public, you're not going to make money. If anybody thinks they're going to come to the public and make money, they're in a different ballgame. And I can say that as a public employee, former public employee. But it's the nature of the game. You can have an early contract, but then there are people who will go from school system to school system. I know Dr. Walgro knows she's had employees who've gone back and forth almost between Northumberland and Lancaster. But it's the nature of the game. But again, their, Lancaster's numbers are equal to or worse than Northumberland in terms of full-time positions. I'm not looking at part-time coaches and all like that.
It's not only the teaching, the teachers. I mean, you have all the time getting deputies, police officers, dispatchers. A lot of the larger fire departments in the cities have vacancies. Even our local EMS agencies have vacancies. So it's not just teaching. It's just all across the board in jobs. And years ago, people were trying to step all over each other to get a position teaching somewhere because of benefits. And the same thing as far as in fire and EMS and police. But, you know, I hate to say it, but I'm going to say it. The more you give people free, the least they have to work. And, you know, it needs to turn around. We got to earn our living. And these jobs are good filled.
Lancaster even has an opening for Director of Finance. She would know, she knows. Do you think she doesn't know? I'd be very surprised.
But I hear all your points. But we got to stop making excuses and find a way. Because for years, for years, when I was in the school system, I mean, you find people that, I always tell them, if you don't love kids, you need to leave. And one guy left in two days. But you got to love kids. You got to love people progressing, growing up, becoming a man, a woman. And you can turn that around. Because one of the greatest fields in the world is... And you can turn that around, because one of the greatest fields in the world is teaching. We have this small county that I had the opportunity of teaching two judges. Two judges from this small county, teaching doctors, lawyers. So we, we have had, we have a great school system, and we, we're going to continue to have a great school system, because we're going to work with it and make it work. All right? Thank you.
Anything else, Tom?
I'd say the greatest job is helping and serving people, and teachers are certainly into all that. And that includes all the ones, our staff right here, they're helping us, they're helping the public.
That's right.
Anybody who serves the public is...
And that's what it should be.
That's right.
All right, ladies?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next would be the county administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, you did have the request for the supplemental appropriation on the adult education from the school division.
Oh, all right. I'm sorry.
I move that we approve both the MOUs and the appropriations.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? State your motion, just because I, I was kind of half-occupied at the time, looking.
I will, you gave me an open I can't take. I move that we approve the MOU with RCC for the adult education program along with the supplemental appropriation.
That's what I thought you said. Second. All right. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes three to one.
Who voted against it?
I did.
Who did?
I did. All right. Next item would be the county administrator's report.
Yes, sir. For the month of July, we had a total of three new structures. Total construction costs for the month, approximately three million dollars. Total construction cost year-to-date, thirty-two million, six hundred seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars, which puts us below this time last year by approximately one point three million dollars. Next item we have is a request by the sheriff's office for a funding request, and Sheriff Beecham is here this evening.
Hello, sir.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. What this is, I have resubmitted my request for three positions, one for each year. This is the same data I presented in April. The reason I am resubmitting this is I wasn't here when that request was cut from the budget. So I watched the video recording, and I was kind of taken back to what I heard. The line item comes up, and Mr. Chairman, you ask the board members, what's the board's pleasure, or is the board okay with it? And Mr. Tomlin speaks up and says, "Well, is the sheriff okay with it?" To which you reply, "The sheriff's okay with it." Well, I'm here to tell you the sheriff's not okay with it. I didn't talk to anybody about it.
All right.
I didn't send an email about it. Matter of fact, I have the copy of the email I did send for volunteer reduction, was the four part-time dispatchers at twenty-five thousand dollars. So I felt that maybe that information maybe misled the board, and they voted the way they did, because they were thinking the sheriff was okay with it.
I'm sorry if I misspoke.
Oh, it's okay. I'm not pointing fingers. I just want to, I just want the board to realize that I, I did not voluntarily request that to be removed from, from my budget request.
All right. Board members have any questions? Sheriff Beecham?
What would be the amount this year, obviously? What would be the cost in personnel, equipment, and vehicle for this year?
So we submitted a salary hiring range, so we could attract people that may already be certified. So the highest range was fifty-three thousand, five hundred, but I don't know the benefit cost. I don't get to see that, that number. I believe in the request, we were somewhere around seventy-four thousand. That included all the cost for employment, benefits, and whatnot. New vehicle would be fifty-five thousand with equipment, uniforms and other equipment, gun belts, ballistic vests and all. I can absorb that in the fiscal year '24 budget.
Now, you got a grant for some stuff, before the budget was adopted. That wouldn't cover any of this, or would it?
It could. It could cover the vehicle.
Okay.
As it stands right now, the board approved three vehicles, so two of those will cover all of the grant.
Okay.
Whichever vehicle we pick, so. It's still going to be an extra call.
Left hand, right hand?
Yeah.
So it's three deputies, so you want to try to get one deputy?
One a year.
Each year?
One a year, yes. And...
One a year.
If you could go, Robert, you go to the next slide. So currently, minimum staffing is two deputies per shift, and I need to go to three, plus a supervisor. So we have two plus a supervisor, and that's when we're fully staffed. Currently, I am two deputies short. The plan would be, day shift would be two deputies, night shift, two deputies, with the sergeant overlaps, and then the animal control officer, the extra animal control officer would work, I'm sorry, that's current. So we would have three deputies at night, two day. Move the additional animal control, so we'd have two. They may overlap. Work them a twelve-hour shift as well. And the reason I'm asking for an extra animal control is, we have one that works eight hours, Monday through Friday. They're not on call, so when he's off or vacation or sick or what have you, the regular patrol deputies have to do that duty, and they're not trained in it. And we've operated that way for twenty-plus years, and I just don't think that's fair to them. We're seeing more and more, and it happened the other day, we're seeing more and more where we're getting multiple calls, and the dispatcher has to tell the person, "Well, I don't have anybody available right now." So we're relying on state police, and they're shorthanded. So it's, I'm seeing the writing on the wall, and I want to get ahead of it before we get way behind.
Have you been able to fill all your other openings?
We had interviews this past week, and I'll do final interviews next week. Hopefully, I can make offers out of that pool.
Hopefully, yeah.
And then hopefully, somebody's going to accept. So we're in the process of trying to fill it.
That would be good. That would help you a little bit right there.
It'll help out, but when we hire somebody untrained, it's a minimum of eight to ten months before they're on the road by themselves. You're talking about academy time, and then you have field training time, and that's a minimum. If they need extra field training, now we're going into an eleventh month. So yes, it's good to fill it, but it's better to fill them already certified.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions for Sheriff Beecham? What's the pleasure of the board? The board want to have time to think about it a little bit.
I'd like to ask the sheriff to get a specific figures for that person, whether, obviously, you got a salary, you got a vehicle. See, you know, if you were making a specific request for this one deputy this year, what would it cost, us and you?
That number was presented.
Yeah, including the deputy with the benefits?
Yes.
Was, let me see, seventy-four thousand, seven thirty-nine was for the deputy with the benefits. And then you add the fifty-five to, to that amount, it's one twenty-nine, seven thirty-nine, one hundred twenty-nine thousand, seven thirty-nine.
But you might have a vehicle independent of doing a separate purchase, would you?
No, we're going to have to buy one. And that's a problem in itself right now, so.
Shorted, shorted the vehicles?
Oh, yeah.
How long does it take you to get a vehicle?
Depends. I mean, I've put it, finally ordered the third one today, and ordered just means that it's ordered. Ford can say we're not building it. Sorry, good luck.
You reserved it.
So it's, I think state police last year ordered two hundred, and Ford said, "Okay, we're going to build thirty." Good luck.
Using the same state police model?
Ford is, is your best bet on getting a police vehicle.
Be nice so they can limit their sales.
Well, I guess they have blowy problems like everybody else.
How much was the total figure for personnel and vehicle?
One hundred twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars.
Seven what?
Seven hundred thirty-nine. One hundred twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize or appropriate the funds of one hundred twenty-nine, seven thirty-nine for the deputy plus a vehicle.
Second. Second. Got a motion, two seconds. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. I hope that helps you some.
Very much. And while I'm standing here, you know, last year was, every year is tight and hard to do budgets, but I just appreciate the support that the board always gives me, even when I come back for stuff like this. I want you to know, I don't ever come up here and ask for once. It's always a need, and hopefully, I justify things. And if you can't do it, you can't do it, but I just feel this board's kind of bent over backwards to keep law enforcement in the forefront, so thank you very much.
Sorry, sorry for the mistake.
Again, I'm not, I just wanted to point it out, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Well, Sheriff Beecham is here also. The, there was a request for the item on the Rappahoe Regional Criminal Justice Academy bylaws and charters update. There was a resolution that needed to be adopted. I don't know if the board has any specific questions related to that.
Got any questions? Board members have any questions? You got any comments, Sheriff Beecham?
No, you know, so the public knows, it, what the change is, it took the charter members out of making all the financial decisions and allowing the training members, who aren't charter members, because we all pay the same fee per deputy or, and communication officer. So they really didn't have a say, but we made them pay. We, because Northumberland's a charter member. So they changed the bylaws to make sure everybody has equity in, in the academy and how's they say and how it's run.
All right. Any, any questions? If not, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move that we make the necessary changes as requested.
Second. All right. Got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item I have is the split precinct located in District Four. Excuse me. This is something that we've approved last year as well, and I think it's something that we will have to do each voting year due to the, the split precinct with town of Kim Monique. So I would just ask that the board approve the resolution for this split precinct so that we can request that, that waiver.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this resolution.
All right. I got a motion, got a second. Second. I got a motion, the second. Any other discussion?
Yes. I'd request that we, that the county minister had a right to our legislators to, in these situations like Northumberland, having part of Kim Monique in, in Northumberland County, why should we have to do a waiver every year? If we make a request one time, and the state board of elections or department elections approve on that understanding.
Well, I would make it better, but I don't know if he'll do it.
Hey, all you can do is request.
Yeah.
I know. You make your request. All right. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Next, Mr. Tadline.
All right. The next item, we were asked to put this item on the agenda for the canoe kayak launch regarding the Glee Point fishing pier. We had received estimates previously, and the board had asked for that to go back to the planning commission to come up with a general scope of work. The information was sent back out to the contractors, and the contractors had indicated that the information that they provided was what, how they would perform the job. So we did not receive any updated figures regarding these estimates that, that you have before you. Not sure if we've received any updates from Mr. Clark.
I got a verbal from Mr. Fisher today that he had talked to Mr. Clark, and he said that with the increase in cost of stone and all the, all the other items there, probably be about another eleven hundred dollars. I think the other contractors had not, they had not rebid anything with the, with the same amount of tonnage. Everybody's got different tonnage on everything, and I got one bid here, that's Mr. Clark's bid, has more tonnage of everything. It's up to the board.
Then you got some were using millings and some of them were not, so...
I know. It's apples and oranges in there, and that's why we tried to get it where you could take the exact same amount of tonnage per stone, everything be the same, had one had two large pieces of stone. So your opinion of large and mine are two different things instead of so many tons of it. It's been a difficult process to try to get a bid.
I don't know which is better, a milling or fifty-seven, sixty-nine, or whatever, sixty-eight, whatever it is.
Millings are a lot cheaper in stone.
Yeah, but they're real, real small.
Yeah.
That's not exactly a flat area.
Not a flat surface, it's going to wash, you're going to have to pack those millings, and you need a little heat to pack them. Stuart, you got any comments, anything?
No, sir. Mr. Fisher called me at the party and said he had numbers. He was wanting to give you details. I, I probably got more than I do.
That's, all I know is it's about eleven hundred dollars more money.
Right.
And I would bring it up to what, it'd be what, twelve thousand, fifty dollars, twelve I don't know. It's up to the board. But it's just been difficult trying to get, get a price and everybody get on the same When you have one contractor saying they'll put five tons of armor stone there, and the other says two large pieces, it's no way to compare that. And then, like you say, you have your millings and all. There's no way to compare them either.
Just like the heavy rains or rains that we're having that causing shoulder... Just like the heavy rains or rains that we're having that causing shoulder collapses or problems. You get too much rain, you're gonna have the same problem with this. And then you put that right in the bay.
And then you had, uh, you had sand, one would be so many tons of sand, and one would be so many cubic yards of sand. It's just been difficult.
What's down in there? Blue stone or?
Nothing.
Nothing.
It's gotta be built. This is the, this would be all the materials to build the kayak launch.
You go underneath the bridge and you go to the right.
Yeah.
You got the pier on the left of the bridge. This would be underneath the bridge over to the right. So you're right there on the water?
Yeah.
Right on the water.
So asphalt millings is petroleum base. Do you want petroleum-based products next to the water?
That's one bad thing. Mm-hmm.
Something to keep in mind.
That's right. But that entire, that entire area there has to be built. It's just grass and all now, and some of it's washed a little bit. There's a little, a couple little, small spots where the soil's washed, though the grass is growing in there now.
It appears that the scope of work from, from all three are pretty much the same. They're gonna do a turnaround area. One of them has eighty feet in here.
Yeah.
They talk about the armor stone. Or two large pieces of stone. But pretty much the way it reads, the scope of work, pretty much the same. I guess the big decision is whether you wanna go off the millings or you wanna go off the stone. They're still gonna do a walkway. They got a tree removal.
Well, Jimmy, I agree with you on the asphalt millings. I don't think we want them next to that water if we can help it. I know we get enough runoff from everything else, but we don't think we need to add to it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go with Earth's Resources in the bid price of eighty-five hundred, which does not include millings.
All right. We got a motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All right, got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
All right, the next item I have, we will need to advertise the budget amendment for the September fourteenth board supervisor's meeting, which would include the ARPA funds, the carryover funds that we have, the ARPA tourism monies, the opioid monies, the school monies that were recently appropriated, and actually tonight's appropriation of the sheriff's office monies.
So moved.
I got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Uh, we still have several vacancies on the Economic Development Commission. I believe District One, Mr. Brand has an appointment, Mr. Dan Quarter, for your consideration tonight.
All right, I'll second that. We got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we still have vacancies for Districts Two and Five. We received an email from Greg Hunter earlier this week regarding the Meadow Peninsula Northern Neck Regional Radio System, and they were asking that each locality provide two designated policy team members. They do want to try and meet the week of August twenty-eighth or the week of September fifth to kick things off.
All right, so you need two, you need two members. Jimmy, you be interested?
I'll settle on that committee.
All right.
Jump on if you didn't.
All right. Who else do we need, Luttrell?
Uh, it's whoever the board wants to designate.
Where do they meet? They, various places. So, I mean, it could be in Tappahannock, it could be in King and Queen, it could be here. More than likely, the first kickoff meeting for the radio system is gonna be here.
You don't wanna do it, I'll do it. I have no problem.
You can do it.
You know, it's up to you.
Do it. Or do you want either Mr. Tadlock or Mr. Basie?
Well, that's, that's another thing, too. I don't know. It's depends what this board wants to do.
Maybe we have a perspective different than the board members, maybe.
Right. But either Drew or Luttrell, which one of y'all would, would you like to do, serve on to?
Y'all know your workload's a lot of weeks.
Do they have alternates on that?
I don't believe so. I think you allow two, and if one can't make it, then.
I guess what I was thinking, you could designate one of us and then the other be alternate if you want.
Right.
Probably what we're gonna need to do is once, once we get this moving and the, the, um, the IT position is filled, that person needs to sit in one of the seats. And one person would need to come off.
I don't want your workload, Mr. Tadlock. I know you got very much.
I, I guess to, to kick things off, um, right now until we can get the other position up and running, it's kind of being split between the sheriff, chief of EMS, and myself. So if you want, I can sit on it for the time being, and then as we go through it, and we need to alternate, we can do that, too. Okay?
I move that we appoint Mr. Brand and Mr. Tadlock as our two representatives.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the last item I have, um, I was gonna ask the board if you all would consider closing the county offices on Tuesday and remember to Ronnie Jett for staff to be able to attend the funeral. So moved.
Second.
So moved, second. Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea. He served here a long time, so we need to show him some respect. And that also gives county employees time to, to, uh, get to the funeral if, if they so desire.
All right.
All right, got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you all for doing that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Y'all wanna postpone the check register, or you go ahead and do that now?
We can do that, that ain't gonna take long.
All right. Check register. Everybody had a chance to review the check register?
I move we approve it.
All right. Motion. I got a motion, a second. All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Board comments, or you wanna take him to the last?
What are we doing about the, um, committee that we discussed during the joint?
I wanted to do that in board comments. We can do, do that real quick if you want. The committee that we're gonna have, the joint committee between the school board and the board of supervisors, we have a representative for the, uh, for the person out in the public would be Dr. Karen Piker. She's here tonight. I'd like to put her name up for election on that.
Yes.
All right.
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion, a second. We have any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're rolling.
All right. Convene and close the meeting, we can do that later. That's all right with the board. All right. Public comments? Anybody would like to speak tonight? Open the public comments, anybody would like to speak? Got anybody? All right, empty? All right, I have no one on, on the public comment period sheet that signed up. Would anybody like to speak tonight? Anybody like to speak? All right, do we have, do we have anybody in the virtual world would like to make a public comment tonight? Do we have anybody in the virtual world that would like to make a public comment tonight? All right, since we have no public comments, I'm gonna close the public comment period. And we will start on our public hearings tonight. Our first hearing has been tabled from, uh, July the thirteenth meeting. It's a request by Andrea Corry.
These are just carryovers, these are not.
Yes, carryover, yeah. Yeah. The board have any comments or questions? And Mrs. Corry, are you here tonight? Oh, yes, ma'am, I see you there. You have any other comments you want to add? All right. The board have any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask Mr. Marston Reed to read any suggested conditions.
All right, Mr. Marston, would you be so kind, read the conditions?
Yes, sir. Suggested conditions, if approved, are all required permits and/or licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies, including compliance with all applicable state, federal, and local laws, regulations, ordinances, or rules concerning taxes, including transient occupancy tax. A smoke detector and a carbon monoxide detector shall be located in each bedroom and any other location required by the building code. There shall be at least one off-street parking space for each bedroom and no on-street parking. The vacation home rental shall have an access driveway to a state highway with a sufficient twelve-foot width, twelve-foot height, and condition to accommodate emergency services, vehicles, and equipment. The vacation home rental shall register and maintain registration with the county's registry if such ordinance is enacted by the board of supervisors. The vacation home rental shall register a local manager who possesses the authority and ability to promptly address and correct any violations of the conditions, use requirements, and/or limitations applicable to the vacation home rental with the building and zoning office and the sheriff's office. This registry shall include the name, address, and telephone number of the local manager, and this shall also be posted in a conspicuous area of the vacation home rental. The vacation home rental's boundary line shall be clearly marked and identified for the occupants of the rental home. An inspection of the vacation home rental shall be conducted annually by the building official or designee and shall be paid by the owner pursuant to the county's adopted fee schedule. Recreational vehicles may be parked on the property but may not be used by guests for living quarters during their stay at the vacation home rental. Renters' pets shall be kept under control at all times. Overnight occupancy shall be limited to two persons per bedroom plus two additional persons per residence. This conditional use permit is non-transferable and does not attach to the property if ownership changes. There shall be no golf cart use by the renters on the roads. The applicant shall maintain liability insurance, and the renter shall not use the civic association's amenities.
Thank you. Board have any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this request with the suggested conditions, and this motion is made in due consideration of the public health and safety, the general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience, and in the exercise of good zoning practices and in pursuant to the body's statutory authority.
All right, got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Do I have any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those against? Corry, your motion passes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. And next is the carryover that was tabled from July the thirteenth. It's a request by Christopher and Laura McMillan. Mr. and Mrs. McMillan here tonight. Ma'am, you have any additional comments you want to present to the board? I couldn't quite hear you, ma'am. Okay. Board have any comments or questions? Mr. Marston, the conditions are, are exactly the same?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve this request. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve this request, and this motion is made in due consideration of public health and safety, the general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience, and in the exercise of good zoning practices and pursuant to the body's statutory authority.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Do I have any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Your motion passes, ma'am. Thank you. Next, we have a third one, would be a tabled request from July the 13th. It's John L. Forster. Forster, are you here tonight? You have any additional comments, sir?
Yes. Thank you very much. I did send you a testimony, and most of it related to my work as the, from the rental point of view. I'm a little, and I appreciate that you've given everybody conditional use permits. The list of requirements, there was a new one added that was not discussed last time. I am completely comfortable with all of the restrictions except the one where it says we cannot use what was referred to as community amenities. We, there's quite a strong differences of opinion in the community over what, who owns those amenities and who has the right to use them. What I wrote in my testimony was that I have a deeded right to use the beach, it's in my deed. The deed that the community got to receive their property, which is the beach and the picnic area, that also had a deeded provision in there that said it wasn't, the property was not for their benefit, but it was for all owners. Because the person who deeded that property to them did not want that amenity to go just to the club members, but wanted it to be given, it was specifically given to all owners in the community. So I strongly believe that my deeded right to use those things trumps their bylaws. I've been advised by my counsel that the club's new definition of allowed beach users are arbitrary and unenforceable. Also questionable, the club's recently amended bylaws changed the previous description of the community amenities from common areas, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, common areas, to club-owned property. So when I bought my property five years ago, and I was, had access to the, to my deeds, finally when I joined the club, I had access to their bylaws, and their bylaws refer to all their amenities as common areas that I have a right to use. So I'm, I strongly object to only the last provision because it takes away my rights to rent my property functionally. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. I would love to have my use permit not strike that last provision, if possible. That would be my request.
All right, thank you. Any board members have any questions, comments?
Only comment I got, it seems like it's a lot of legal issues involved in this. We not, we can't get involved with legal issues.
No, we cannot. We have no control over legal, no control over golf carts, beach, nothing.
And you can get a deed, I can give you a deed to the Golden Gate Bridge. I mean, that's what you expect legality, it's true. I don't know the legalities, Mr. Brand said. There, for a while, there was legality whether you had provisions in restrictive covenants about residential use, even allowing short-term rentals. Supreme Court of Virginia decided that in the Scott Walker and Walker case. Depending upon the ambiguity or not of restrictive covenants. Obviously, there's a lot of legal scenarios in here, but that is the way we've done with the other two, and I'm gonna make the motion, we do the same this time. And if there is, I mean, you can get, I mean, we got a county attorney, but he's not gonna get involved with this, but you can have an attorney here, attorney here, there's only one attorney I worry about, that's a person who wears a black robe.
Correct.
And that's what, that's what ultimately is gonna have to come through this type of scenario.
I actually agree with you completely. In the event a court looked at these, at the bylaws, and came to, made a decision that the bylaws were not enforceable and were not effective and had a, I'm sorry, I don't understand the legal word, but something to, you know, shut down the bylaws, would you be open to removing that contention?
It's not gonna be just the bylaws, it's gotta be the ownership of the common area or the rights there too.
Correct, I agree with you on that.
If there's a change in, a definitive legal court case or whatever, then we, of course, can entertain to reduce that or change that.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'm comfortable with your decision, because I believe the burden is on me to fix that legal problem, not on you.
It's a burden on somebody bigger besides us.
Exactly. So, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
No.
Not, I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve this request, and this motion is made in due consideration of the public health.
Sir, sir, you wanna make them subject to the proposed conditions I presented?
Yeah, it's, well, I withdraw my motion and restate it, I approve the request with the conditional use suggestions, and this motion is made in due consideration of public health and safety, the general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience, and in exercise of good zoning practice and in pursuant to the body's statutory authority.
All right, I got the motion. I got a second, Jim?
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next item, excuse me, the next item was tabled from July the 13th, requested by John and Pamela Woodrum. Mr. Woodrum, are you here tonight? You have any comments? I don't see Mr. Woodrum here. All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
The last condition that was added from the last one, from the previous one didn't, last month didn't have that suggested condition, right? Correct. And is Mr. Wood, Mr. Woodrum aware of this condition?
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table this to next month.
Right.
And we request that the Woodrums be present so they can make sure, if it approved, they know all their restrictions and requirements.
Second. All right, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, that will be tabled till September meeting. All right, and next is a public hearing here. Philip, would you take care of that, sir?
Yes, sir. We have a request by David C. and Vivian R. McGaw, owners, for a conditional use permit to allow construction of an addition 378 square feet to an existing 544-square-foot boathouse, creating a structure larger than the allowed 700 square feet. Property is shown as tax map parcel 8-1-69F1, and is located at 786 Hidden Point Road.
All right, thank you.
And I have not received any correspondence regarding this request.
All right.
What was it?
Mr. McGaw?
No correspondence received.
Would you like to make a statement, sir?
Oh. He's gonna do it, somebody's gonna do it.
Somebody's gonna do it.
We're going to Tannen.
That'll be fine, whatever.
Good evening. I'm Craig Palabinski with Bay Shore Design. I'm the agent who prepared the drawings and filed the application presented here to you tonight. I'll just briefly go over the project details, and then I'll talk over Mr. McGaw for further explanation. Basically, what we have here is an existing pier structure and a cover boat slip which moors his 24-foot boat. Along the west side of that existing cover slip is a finger pier with a boat lift on the western side of that finger pier, for which he moors a 17-foot skiff, and he would like to put that under cover. So what we're proposing is from overhang to overhang is a 14-by-27-foot extension of the existing covered slip. The inside clearance is about 10 and 1/2 by 24 feet. The, the structure itself is within the shadow of the existing covered boat slip. In other words, the ridge line is about a foot and 1/2 lower than the existing, it doesn't extend out any further into Balls Creek. And when you look at it from east to the west, all you see is the existing boathouse with this roof in front. When you look from east out to the west towards Ours and Marina, you're just gonna see the existing covered slip. The width of the waterway here is about 450 feet across, and really is no view obstruction from the neighbor's point of view. Currently on Bell's Cove, there are about seven cover boat slips, including his own existing. So there's quite a number of cover slips, and there are two that are in excess of 700 square feet. The neighboring property to the west, you know, bears have actually two cover slips, both of which are over 400 square feet, and there's also another one up towards the head of Bell's Cove that's over 1,050 square feet. So there are some other structures that are larger than what is normally allowed under the zoning ordinance. So I just wanted to make that point, make that point, and again, the project is not protested, and both the adjoining property owners have signed off on the project. That's all I have, and I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding the drawings or the application.
All right, any board members having any comments, questions, before I open the public hearing here? All right, thank y'all. I will open the public, now I'll open the public hearing. Mr. McGaw, I have you on here again, and I know you don't wanna speak again. Craig, I have you too, unless you wanna speak.
I don't think we had anything else to add, Craig, pretty much.
You're on the public sign-up sheet, so if you wanna speak.
Oh, I, I guess I thought that was a tenant's sheet.
That's all right.
Sorry, sir.
We're not, we're not a school.
Hey, that happens all the time, so don't pay any attention.
All right.
All right, anyone here tonight would like to speak about this project? Anyone here tonight like to speak about this project? All right, do we have anybody in the virtual world like to speak about this project? Anybody in the virtual world like to speak about this project? All right. We have no one who wants to speak, so I will close the public hearing, and the matter is for the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant this request in due consideration of public health and safety, and the general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience, and in the exercise of good zoning practice and pursuant to the body's statutory authority.
Second.
With the conditions, and read the conditions.
And Mr. Marston will read the conditions?
Yes, sir. Suggested conditions if approved, that all required permits and/or licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies, and the boathouse shall be constructed as shown on the joint permit application.
All right. I got a motion and a second. All right, any other discussion?
Obviously, you have no objections from any people that are, would be objectionable, so to speak. Plus, the boathouse is way down, and you're looking over top of it, any adjoining property owner is not gonna be affected by that. There are larger other ones in the same vicinity, so it's not anything exceptional in that request either.
It's not, uh-uh. It really doesn't hardly change anything. If you look at it from a waterside, you're not gonna pay any attention at all to it.
You hardly would know any difference looking down from the gate.
Yeah, looking down either, so.
You would not climb through that gate, I can tell you.
Yeah. All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Thank you, sir, your motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
All right. The next one is a change to our Northam County zoning ordinance. Mr. McKenzie?
Yes, sir. A revision to the Northam County zoning ordinance, section 148-155, solar energy facilities to modify the definition of solar energy facility, small system, to require negotiations on compensation of impacts to the county, to prohibit solar energy facilities in R1 residential general and R2 residential waterfront zone properties, require an environmental impact statement, a landscape agreement, and surety, require an annual report of power output by month, stipulate decommissioning requires removal of infrastructure above and below ground, reduce the time for revision of the decommissioning plan from every five years to every two years, increase the time to decommission a solar energy facility from six to 12 months, as well as stipulate when the decommissioning plan and surety are due.
All right, thank you. Any board members having any comments before I open the public hearing? No comments? All right, I will open the public hearing. Owner's person to have sign up tonight is Blake Cox. It's getting thin in here now, we're thinning out.
And there were two. Yeah, Blake Cox here with Energy Right, the nonprofit. Great to be back in front of you gentlemen this evening. Just as a reminder, our mission is to educate around clean energy, being developed the right way on the local level, using conservative ideals like property rights and an all-of-the-above approach to energy. Do wanna make a couple of quick comments on the ordinance forth, or put in front of you tonight. There's just three really small things that I think largely won't change the document, because I think largely this is a really good document that will protect landowners. So first, and I know I've addressed this several times with the board, but restrictions in specific districts, R1 and R2, in particular, I think the sentiment is totally fair and reasonable. I obviously don't think large-scale utility facilities should be right next to all of our residential homes, I think that's completely fair. But I also don't think you should limit your ability to shape good projects in the county, so I would just suggest something along the lines of strongly discourage, strongly discourage proposing solar projects in R1 and R2 unless adequate setbacks in screening can be provided, or include a guideline such as in your comprehensive plan to set that vision out to any, you know, developer or person looking to develop a project here in the county. Second, this is kinda technical, grass slash vegetation maintenance requirements, I believe you guys had something along the lines of cutting twice a year or something along those lines. I would just consider making it, making the adjustment to something along the lines of a certain height requirement that's much more standard across the state, would also allow for, if somebody wanted to integrate something like agrivoltaic, something along the lines of sheep grazing into a project, that would allow them to do that, and so obviously keep your goal of keeping a well-maintained project. Lastly here, maybe staff will have some appreciation for this one, but every five years is kinda the standard across the state for reviewing surety bonds or decommissioning plan along those lines. I think you guys have two, so I would just suggest five, it's a lot on staff, but, you know, if you feel it's appropriate, it's appropriate. But again, it's a largely really good document, and look forward to engaging in the future with you all. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. I'm in, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
When the board, I'm sorry, when the planning commission first, first sent this to the board, they had a recommendation that they felt that two years of review for the decommissioning plan was kind of onerous, but they knew you all wanted to strengthen the decommissioning plan, and went ahead and changed it to two years, but they wanted me to add the recommendation that they think that five years is adequate. By doing it this way, we would not have to re-advertise. If you choose to change it from two years back to five years, then we would not have to re-advertise it. But the planning commission thought, went ahead and did it because we didn't wanna have to send it back and re-advertise it, so I just wanted you to know that the planning commission would recommend it for five years.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right, anyone else like to speak tonight? Have no one else that has signed up on the sheet tonight?
Virtual world here.
Sir?
Are you ready for a virtual world?
Yes, sir.
This is Jim Johnson at 4:03 J. South. I just wanna make sure that all of us stands that the planning commission considered the... comments about restricting this in the certain residential neighborhoods, and if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Marston can correct me, but voted unanimously to keep those exclusions in the document, not as proposed by the previous speaker.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else in the virtual world like to speak tonight? Anyone else in the virtual world like to speak tonight? All right, since I have no one else wants to speak tonight, I'll close the public hearing and the matter is before the board.
I may have overlooked it, but I thought we had a two-hundred-foot setback from the road. From the, was from the ditch line?
That's what we had. Mr. McKenzie, had that two-hundred-foot, excuse me, had that two-hundred-foot setback been taken out?
No, sir. Uh, we modified the language. Um, it's D, number two. Uh, we, we had originally, um, that shall require minimum setback of twenty-five feet with a two-hundred-foot setback from the edge of the right of way of any state maintained road. The board of supervisors can reduce the two-hundred-foot setback, and previously we had the verbiage, if the applicant installs measures to prevent vehicles from entering the facility as a result of a traffic accident, which is very specific and limited the board to what they could do. So we struck tho, tho, that language, if applicant installs measures to prevent vehicles from entering the facility as a result of a traffic accident, and changed it to the supervisor can reduce the two-hundred-foot setback as adjusted by conditions of the particular site, which gives you more flexibility. It's not just traffic accidents, could be topography, could be other things, but the two-hundred-foot setback i, is still there, uh, with a minimum of twenty-five, but we just changed, uh, instead of a specific example, we just said as adjusted by the conditions of the site, so that it would afford maximum flexibility.
All right. Board members have any other comments, questions?
I'm gonna stay in firm on the two-hundred-foot setback. You go throwing a twenty-five-foot minimum, then you allow someone to put in the guardrail and there you then, then, uh, put in another situation that could take place.
Yep.
But that's something we can decide as we move forward.
I got one comment. We joined the Rural Solar Coalition. We have not had our first meeting with them, we have not had them review this yet, we have not gotten any advice from them, because they have a large pool to pull from.
Needs to be reviewed by them.
That's my suggestion, is that we table this until we get this reviewed.
I don't have a problem with that. The only comment I'd have is about the two-five-year thing. I would say maybe consider two years after approval, it be done, and then five years thereafter. The reason being is unless this board is gonna adopt somewhere either in this amend, this amendment, if it's there, that there is an independent licensed engineer who determines the decommissioning plan, as opposed to being relied upon the applicant's engineer.
Yep.
That's the question. If you're, if we're gonna be basically receiving what the applicant has, then I think a two, a closer look to get a plan that would then be determined by an independent licensed engineer, but then five years after would be pretty consistent, and with that, that's something I would suggest to consider something.
All right.
A little two-step type thing.
I don't have a bit of problem with that, but, uh.
Because we all know everyone we've been had is been submitted by their engineer, they've come up with the surety amount.
Yep. That's, I, I, I don't like that part. I, I think it needs to be somebody else.
And that's, that's the question is then, if the board is going to either hire independent or as part of the application fee, the cost of that person. Do it.
Yep. All right. We can certainly consider those things and make those changes, um, but there is a motion on the floor of the table.
And the other thing is about the district. Um, R-one, that's not too concerned, but I'm more worried, but R-two, zoning in the Thomin County, as we all know, was basically zoned the property as it was used, not necessarily with traditional good.
Yes.
Proper zoning practice. You could have a working farm that was on the water, that'd be A-one, but it's really R-two.
Mm-hmm.
I think an overlay or a distance of X number of feet from the Chesapeake Bay as tributaries would do more to protect the, uh, the water and things like that.
Well, we had talked about that one time.
Yep.
Before, in discussions.
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that the planning commission hadn't done a wonderful job.
I'm not arguing that.
They, they worked on this. They really have. And, uh, they've been working.
And the salvage value? I saw an article, I forgot who wrote it. It said, right now, the, the decommissioning piece to decommissioning it, it's cheaper to landfill it than it is to reclaim it.
Yep.
Because it was thirty-five dollars a panel to reclaim it, but a dollar to refill it. I mean, the land's like, I'm building the landfills.
Yeah.
I don't wanna see landfills filled up with that if they can be helped.
But that's what's going, that's what could possibly happen.
At the present time.
Mm-hmm.
The more the metals become more rare than it becomes, but right now, and that was out on the west part of the state, which is more practice of dealing with solar farms and obviously the East Cubs.
All right, any other comments? If not, I got a motion. I don't have a second yet.
Second.
I got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All right, we will table that until we can talk to the Rural Solar Coalition. Ladies and gentlemen, that's all the public hearings we have tonight. Only thing we have left on here tonight is we need to convene into a closed meeting.
How about the board comment?
Board comments. I'm sorry, board comments. Thank you, Jim. You have any comments?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Tadlock, about two or three. The solid waste sites, uh, what control do we have, because, uh, some of them are getting outraised as far as cleanups around the sites, all right? So I don't know what control we have over that, but if we do, it need to be, uh, it need to be clean.
You referring to the Loxburg site, Mr. Long?
No, that's one, but that's not the whole one. All of them.
It's, it's gotten bad again.
Right.
You, you talking about all of them?
We're talking about all of them.
Yeah.
I will, I will get with waste management.
Right. Uh, the other thing, how about the EBB bank? What, what's the, what's the update on that?
As far as the roof?
Yeah.
Um, we have signed the contract. Actually, that was done this week. Um, the contract has been sent back to the contractor. They are looking at trying to schedule a preliminary, uh, construction meeting, uh, so that the school division, county, and everybody is, uh, prepared. And I believe they are looking at, what was it, Labor Day? Labor Day timeframe to get that started.
Yes, Labor Day timeframe. Um, they, like Mr. Tadlock said, they've signed the contracts, um, they're working on getting some middle documents back to our engineer in charge, who is Dave Lebo with HDH, and once they're approved, they, they anticipate starting that, that construction , um, around about Labor Day.
Okay. And the last thing I have, uh, what's the update on the old school board office? Where are we on that?
Uh, well, the, the property has been transferred, um, and it's, uh, one of the things that the planning commission is going through is looking at all the properties that the county owns and making, uh, some recommendations on those. So, has, nothing further has been done regarding that property specifically, but that's kinda where things are, are right now.
Okay. Thank you. Jimmy? That's all I have. All right.
For said, the limbs, trees, and stumps. I don't see any progress on that.
Thank you for bringing up, because that was on my list.
What's that, Tom?
As far as the pile of yard waste, tree stumps, it's getting, it's not getting any smaller.
There's a little bit of progress in the back.
You're pushing it, that's all you're doing.
Yeah, but that pile's been like that for eight, nine, ten, twelve months.
I know that.
And it is a fire hazard.
And I keep, I heard one time it was this issue. It's not getting resolved.
Mm-mm. So, Mr. Tadlock, you need to make sure that you find us something on that. Something has to be done.
I will get with Mr. Sefel. I had spoken to him, I guess it's been a, it's been a couple of weeks now. They did get the part that, one of the issues was he was trying to get a part. Uh, they got the part, they got the wrong part, and then it was another. Um, they had to get the technician out. Um, they, it was my understanding, the last time I spoke to him, they've gotten all of that straight, and they've started chipping, they started chipping in the backside of that, but we'll, we'll certainly follow up with him.
Well, why start in the back? Start in the front where people come in.
It's difficult to get in it.
Yeah, and then you go on that left side, you're gonna get stuck.
Difficult. And what you got to drive on back there, if you get a little rain onto it.
Yeah.
That stuff gets mushy.
Yeah.
And you get stuck very easily, and then you're gonna have somebody's vehicle tow up.
And whose fault is it?
And whose fault's it gonna be? But you don't see anybody down there working.
Nope.
It's just vacant the whole time. If they go down and they grind for a few hours and they leave, you can't make progress that way.
Well, the problem is, they're being paid whether they grind or not, and that's a problem.
Yep. That's a big problem. So we need to have someone down there grinding every day till they get it ground up.
Or else we have to look at the contract and our remedies. We need a new contract that's output based.
You need that in a motion, or do you?
Let, let me speak to him first, and then I'll bring that back to the board.
We need to, we need to do a new contract so it's output-based. They're based upon a certain amount of have to get paid just to have equipment there, but then they should only get paid based upon what they put out. Production. Production, that we pay employees to work, and right now, they're getting paid and drawing a salary, based drawing funds and not doing what people want.
I just don't want us to have a fire down there, because it's gonna be a big one.
Tell you this, it's not as bad.
And Jimmy's gonna have to be down there working on that one.
Well, I can tell you, it's not as bad as it'll be over in Lancaster. I've seen that one.
Oh.
Behind the, uh, old Gettin' Zip.
Yeah.
That yard goes start down, goes down, uh, that road right beside it. I rode down the other day and, ugh.
That one's really piled up.
That's about, theirs is about three or four times as long and about two or three times taller. Every fire department in the neck would be down there for a long time.
All right, any other comments? Yes.
Board reports. We did, did get some reports from some of the staff, and two that we didn't get that we should get, treasurer's office and commissioner of revenue.
What, what treasurer?
In a board packet, you know, and department heads give a monthly report, and we didn't get anything from the treasurer's office and the commissioner of revenue.
Well, they're constitutional officers, that's a little bit challenging.
Right. That's right.
They, they were notified on the, the total list, so.
Okay, but citizens have the right to a report. It's tax money going into their office, and I can't help with their constitutional officer or not.
Well, as the sheriff can tell you.
The sheriff does a report. He keeps us updated quite well.
A constitutional officer do their own hiring and firing, control their offices, et cetera.
That's right.
But he does keep us informed.
Yes, he does. You also don't have, you don't have.
I give him credit for that.
If you're gonna look at the treasurer and the, and the commissioner of revenue, you got the Commonwealth attorney, there's no report from them. You gonna pick out two constitutional officers, sheriff keeps his report, that's another one. But their consti, sheriff will tell you, he's, they're, they're constitutional, Virginia Constitution specifically authorizes it. Take law enforcement, the powers away, but you still gotta have a sheriff. I'm not, I'm not gonna vote for a police department, I can tell you. That'd be too much duplication.
All right. Now, on our joint board between the school board and the board, we did elect our citizen member. Who the other, who the other two board members gonna be?
I'll do it.
All right, that's fine. You want that in a motion?
I so move.
All right, I got a motion, got a second. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'm not gonna vote, because, uh, don't make much difference, I'll vote yes. It don't make any difference, really. Any other board comments?
Yes, sure. I wanna ask you a question.
That's a comment.
Um, God, I meant to brought this up. I see a lot of debris on, on the roads and everything, you know, uh, and then I see some trucks with a covering.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, a lot of dangerous stuff drops in the highway, because people don't have a covering on there, and, uh, it's dangerous, 'cause it happened to me.
Happened to me too. I actually stopped somebody the other day.
Yeah.
A mirror come off a trailer.
Yeah.
Glass everywhere.
It was night, I couldn't see, and I ran out there and knocked my, uh, knocked my lights out.
Mm-hmm.
Something, something fell in the road. I didn't know, you know, some, some people think, or other people, and some just, I don't know how to think, but, you know, when they had it, something over top of that, it keeps a lot of them falling out.
Yeah, I think that your litter committee has come up with a cover your load campaign. I don't know where they are on that.
Yeah, they, they.
Chairman?
Yeah.
Could I speak to that?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Uh, last, last month, y'all authorized a grant to DEQ that Litter Committee put together for our cover your load initiative, uh, where, uh, requesting DEQ pay for, I think the number is two-hundred-and-fifty cargo nets to put on the back of pickup trucks to cover load. Uh, they also have an education campaign, where they're gonna create three banners for each one of the, um, convenience centers that says cover your load and states, the state law that, that says you must keep your load constrained in your vehicle for safety purposes. Also, they're gonna have a, a couple of newspaper articles, uh, as well as, uh, at the farmer's market, uh, if you sign a pledge that says, I will use a cargo net to cover my trash when I take it to the dump, they'll give you a free cargo net. In addition, we wanna give the sheriff, I can't remember if it was twenty-five or fifty nets, so that they could give them to the deputies, so when they are driving behind somebody and they see something fall out, they can pull them over, and if they wanna give them a ticket, they can, but they can also give them a cargo net and say, this may help you in the future. But, uh, yeah, that's one of our four initiatives is the cover your load. We're hopeful that DEQ will fund that, uh, but, uh, the anti-litter committee has come up with that, and we're, we're trying to move forward with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. There's been a lot of furniture laying on side of the road here lately, too.
Yeah.
All right.
Need a couch, two or three rows, if you get one.
I know.
Land in the ditch.
Luth, well, I got a couple of things here for you.
Down buckets all.
When are we gonna have our joint meeting with, with Susan, uh, Sue it?
Uh, she wants to have a joint meeting with the board supervisors and the planning commission, so you provide me some dates and I can check with her schedule and see what, uh, what we can get together.
All right. Board members got any dates? Right over here.
Well, how much time would you, everybody need to get together? I mean, you can't do it real quick since we're dealing with more than one group.
No, planning commission's got a meeting on 17th. We got planning commission, got emergency management on the 30th.
I tell you, would you like me to reach out to her first and see what dates she may be available first?
Yeah, do that.
And then we can get back and...
Yeah, that's super.
Yeah, I think that would be good. Any update on central, on the central purchasing policy?
That was implemented July 1. So we've had participation in the county offices migrating to that, so...
All right. I guess that's all for right now. All right. Any other comments from the board? All right. If not, we will, we need to convene into a closed meeting.
One minute break. Want me to read the motion?
Yeah, if you don't mind, read that.
I need the board to make motion or move that the North Homeland County Board of Supervisors convene in a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2, 3711A1, for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary are the county administrator, assistant county administrator, and county attorney, because they are deemed necessary and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA, Section 2.2, 3712.
All right. Tommy?
I so move with Mr. Tadlock reading.
Thank you, Tommy. Second. Got a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for coming tonight. We will go into closed meeting and we will come out as quickly as possible.
We shall return.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who you gonna have here? Word?
I've got the motion to come out if you want that.
Yeah, take the motion anytime you're ready.
Need a motion that the North Homeland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and as were identified in the motion for meeting, the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Chairman, I so move with Mr. Tadlock reading.
I was waiting for you to say that, Tommy.
A second.
All right. Got a motion, a second. All right. Jim?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Tommy?
Aye.
Aye.
Tommy just does that part so well.
I know he does.
After he reads it, I can do that.
I always look at him every time for it. All right. What else? You need us to take any other action?
No, just for clarification, on next Tuesday, I do believe there is an Economic Development Commission meeting. Typically, when we close the courthouse, the meetings are not held as well, so just for clarification on that.
Yep. That's fine with me.
Yep.
All right. Anything else? Any other business y'all got?
The feeling is, when?
Tuesday.
Viewing is Monday.
Monday, 5 to 8, Monday.
5 to 8, Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
Guess if we don't have anything else, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Well, we do have some business to do with the unfortunate passing of Mr. Jett. We have a vacancy.
That's right. You're right.
We've got to make some process about what to do.
Do we do it or do the judge?
Can we wait till after the funeral to do this?
Oh, yes, after the funeral, but we need to set a meeting date.
Well, we can leave the meeting open then.
Okay.
Let's leave the meeting open and we can do something after planning commission meeting. Had to put us to last week of this month. That look like something for y'all?
We have 45 days.
I know, we got 45 days.
And then the process of how to do it is what we haven't decided.
Well, we can research the process.
Well, that's what we got a county attorney for.
And have that maybe available when we meet.
Yes, that's...
Yep.
Yeah, Lutz and I have discussed it, and I'm gonna need to get with him.
Yeah, I understand. Because it's an election year, that changes the process, and then we, he served on, he was vice chairman, he served on the jail board, those things have to be considered.
Yeah. Lot of things gotta be considered, that's right. So, yeah, I just want to leave the meeting open.
Leave the meeting open and let Lutz send out some dates for a meeting.
That'll be fine. That'll be good.
Because he's gotta get, him and Mr. Gregory have to talk, and once that gets settled, then we can have a meeting.
This is fortunately a situation that's very seldom run into.
What's that, Tom?
This is a situation that's very seldom run into.
All right.
Statewide.
Yeah. All right.
Any other discussion then? Motion carryover.
Motion we carryover to a date that Mr. Tadlock will suggest to us.
All right. Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for coming.
All right. Everybody have a good weekend.
Mr. Gregory, be safe.
Yes, sir. Thank you.